a quorum, but it is enough to get started with our Friday presentations. And so, we do, all right, we have a quorum. In that case, we'll call her off.
First and check your Atlanta Hernandez, hold on Ms. Kathy Pacheco, Maria Relytta, Ms. Bernice Black, Walters, Faro, ten members present and a quorum, madam president.
All right, thank you, good morning. Since we have a quorum, this is now a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council on Friday, February 9th, 2001. The council meets Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at approximately 10 o'clock. We are being viewed on channel 35, and for those of you who are about to be honored, you can see yourselves again this evening on channel 35, and again on Sunday. What else? We're also available by council phone, and I think that's all I'm going to say about that. We always on Friday begin our day with recognition of important people in the community, and we're going to start with Ms. Walters for a presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We are going to make a presentation this morning to Mrs. Eleanor Leo, who has not only been very important in the community, but she's been very important to the lives of many, many children in the Los Angeles Unified School District, not the least of whom are her own. And she has two of her sons, has two sons here with her this morning.
Tom and Jim.
Tom and Jim, and I would ask if they would come forward and join her. She also has here with her this morning Mr. Bill Anton, former superintendent of the Los Angeles Unified School District. Bill, would you join us, please? And she has a former associate superintendent, deputy superintendent of government relations here with her. We're going to ask Ron Prescott to join us as well. Great. Anybody else here with Eleanor? Okay, we have all of you with Eleanor. Okay, stand up.
There's a fan club out there.
Yes, great, stand up. That is so thrilling. That is really important that they came over to see Eleanor be honored this way. Eleanor has retired from the school district, as have Ron Prescott and Bill Anton. I wish they were still there, but they're not, so we won't go into that. But I first met Eleanor Leo through PTA. And we were both representatives, appointed to a committee at the school district on Title I, or federally sponsored programs for upgrading the education of inner-city children. And that was in 1966. So I've known Eleanor a long time, and I've known personally what the children of this school district have meant to her and what they still mean to her. She has a marvelous family. Two of her children are physicians, and one is an attorney. And it's those same high standards and high aspirations that she held for all of the children in the school district. She worked in our legis-- in "our," I'm putting myself back there. She worked in the school district's legislative office. She worked for PTA in the field of legislation, and she was so good, Bill Johnston got her to come to LAUSD. And that was a good day for LAUSD. She's an outstanding person, and I won't read the wherewithal's here because it would take too long. And not only that, they don't say enough about the person. Eleanor is a tremendous person who has worked not only in school district affairs, but in community affairs, American Jewish Committee. She's worked with UCLA Alumni Association. She's an alumnus of UCLA. She has worked with, probably PTA is still her first love, that's where she was. And she just has high standards, a woman of integrity, a smart woman, brilliant woman. She is an outstanding person in every way, and it's been a real pleasure in my life to have known her as a colleague and a friend. And I'm just pleased to be able to do this this morning.
Thank you so much.
Okay, all right. And maybe some of these folks would like to have something to say. Would you like to say something?
Thank you so much. It has been such a privilege to be able to work for this community's children, and to be able to work with people of the caliber I have been fortunate enough to know, people like Bill Anton, like Ron Prescott, all the people who are here from the government relations office. To work at something to which you are so deeply committed, and be able to do so for a long time with wonderful people who feel the same way is as fulfilling as something can be. I'm very appreciative for this recognition. I thank Rita Walters especially, and I thank all of you. I'm very grateful to you. I'm very grateful to you.
And we want to all thank you for your hard work. Teaching and managing young people's education is one of the most important things you can do.
Thank you.
Chair recognizes Mr. Padilla for a presentation.
Madam President, well--
Mr. Hernandez, for an introduction, while Mr. Padilla's getting his presentation.
Members of the council, I'd like to introduce some personal friends, Marco Navarrete and his two children. Would Gabriela and Marco Junior raise your hands? I just, they're visiting here from Ecuador, and I wanted to point out Gabriela and Marco, because they attend a bilingual school in Ecuador, and during their time here, they're practicing their English. And I thought that was a little bit unique, that they would actually have a school in Ecuador that's bilingual in nature. And again, I want to welcome to Los Angeles, and hope they have a good time visiting our beautiful city. Muchas gracias, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Padilla.
Thank you, Madam President. And Mike, you failed to mention in Spanish, bienvenidos a nuestros amigos de Ecuador, a la ciudad de Los Angeles. Gusto de tenerlos aquí. Madam President, colleagues, it's my pleasure and honor to make the following presentation. And a test of the significance of this event is having had to duke it out with some of your offices for the privilege and the honor. But today, we're sad to celebrate the retirement, after 27 years with the city, of Marjorie Moreau, who began her career with the city in 1973 with the Department of Water and Power, did a tour of duty with the Los Angeles Police Department, and has concluded her career in the Department of General Services. I think one of the statistics that I was given is that she's had her hand in coordinating over 4,500 special events in the city of Los Angeles, including big ones like the media party at the Department of Water and Power during the Democratic National Convention, and certainly a lot of the local community events and press conferences that we, as the elected officials, have. But she's off to a new phase in her life, a new chapter, if that's a pun I can use. She's published her first book, Ladies of the Canyon, and I'm sure she'll be out promoting it, and I believe working on a second book already. But one of the personal things I've already taken from the book, although I haven't read it yet, is I'm going to pass it on to my sister, because it's stories of the trials and tribulations, and the unique experiences of raising childrens as a single mother, which my sister is. So I'll leave it at that. I believe several council members also want to say a few words about Marjorie, as does her colleagues in the department. So with that, I'll turn it over to colleagues first, and then Tony De Clu and John McCreary from General Services, before we hear from Marjorie.
Well, your colleagues aren't paying enough attention, so I don't know which ones want to speak at this moment. Did anybody-- all right.
We'll have the department.
Let's have the department speak, and I bet you by the time this is done, they'll all have noticed.
Thank you, Councilman. It's always an honor and privilege to recognize a sterling performer in our department. Marjorie probably has spent more time with each of you and your colleagues in your offices than I've seen her. Marjorie is also one of the few people that I have in the department that I can count on day to day. When I ask her any question, she says, "John, it's being done, don't worry about it," that's all it takes. And Marjorie, I am going to personally miss you, but where you're retiring, I have a strong envy. I love the Sedona area, and many of you who have been there know what I'm talking about. It's very tranquil, and I think you're much deserving of retirement. So thank you very much.
See, I knew it. Mr. Hernandez.
Yeah, and before I give you a few words, I just wanted to acknowledge, I had the pleasure of working with her when I took over basically the responsibility of putting on the 16th of September event. And I think you were brandy too. And now whoever takes it over after me is going to have to deal with someone new from General Services. But I did want to acknowledge your concern, and the fact that whenever we do these events, you wanted to make sure they were successful. And that was a reflection, I think, of the city and city staff. And just in my own way, I just want to say thank you for your efforts, because you did a superb job for us, and I appreciated that.
Thank you. Now, Marjorie?
Officially.
Your turn.
Thank you, thank you, and best of luck in your retirement.
And now you can say all the things you've waited all these years to say to us.
I'm going to keep it short, because I know people always like short speeches. I just want to say it's been a very exciting 27 years, and anyone who thinks working for the government is boring hasn't worked for the wonderful city of Los Angeles. And I'm going to miss all of you people here in the council, and all the people in the other departments that I've worked with, and all the wonderful, exciting citizens that live here. It's a beautiful city, and I know it's just going to become even better in the future with all the new people who are coming in and new ideas. It's just been very wonderful, and I thank you all for today's certificate.
And after that lovely speech, you're welcome to come back and visit anytime you want. Thank you.
And we just might have to declare one of your book signings as a special event.
There you go.
Thank you, Madam President.
All right, thank you. The chair recognizes Mr. Pacheco for a presentation.
Madam President, colleagues, I'd like to bring up some individuals who are here in Los Angeles as part of a national conference for our Latino youth. We're hosting the Esperanza, Hope for Latino Youth in the Juvenile Justice System National Conference here in the city of Los Angeles. So I want to recognize some individuals who have worked so hard to put this together. I have with me Judge Leahy, the national chair. I also have David Doye, the executive director of the Juvenile Justice Coalition, and Patty Cordova over here, who is the conference chair. This is an event where part of the city of Los Angeles has been supporting our efforts to reduce juvenile and youth crime here in our city. One of our colleagues at the state level, Mr. Cardenas, worked very hard with Adam Schiff to get the Crime Prevention Act of 2000. Through that effort, they have dedicated resources to local governments, law enforcement agencies, community agencies, to help prevent juvenile crime. This is a major problem, especially in large urban areas like Los Angeles. We are very pleased that the United States Department of Justice, the Office of Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention, and others have found that many juvenile crime prevention programs targeted at children and families at risk of entering the justice system are successful in preventing them from entering a life of crime. What we are doing here is trying to get the individuals who practice crime prevention and crime intervention in Latino youth, for Latino youth, to share their experiences, to share what they have done in making model programs in their areas, so that other practitioners can take them back to their communities. So on behalf of the city council, the city of Los Angeles, let me just read the final resolution here, that says, "Therefore, be it resolved that by the adoption of this resolution, the council of the city of Los Angeles supports the national conference sponsored by the Coalition for Juvenile Justice, Esperanza, Hope for Latino Youth in the Juvenile Justice System, to be held in the city of Los Angeles from February 7th, 2001 to February 10th, 2001." And I present this to Judge Leahy, the national chair for the Juvenile Justice Coalition.
On behalf of the Coalition, I thank you most sincerely for this proclamation. It will serve as a physical reminder to us of the wonderful hospitality that we've had here in Los Angeles, especially represented by what Robert Sine has done for us. And I again want to express our appreciation and the honor done us by the presence at our conference yesterday of four members of this council. From the remarks that I heard by you, it's clear that you are in Los Angeles practicing what we preach, making communities safer one youth at a time. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge Leahy. Just to share information with you, the individuals who were present yesterday at the morning breakfast were Councilmember Mark Ridley Thomas, Councilmember Mike Hernandez, Councilmember Alex Padilla, and myself. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilmember Holden for purposes of a presentation.
Before I call this, of a special group from Kaiser Permanente West L.A. sickle cell team participants, I just want to give some background information. When I was a member of the California State Senate, I was selected to be chairman of the Select Committee on Genetic Diseases. I was appalled to discover two things. One, sickle cell trait disorders were not even being given any attention at all for education and training, and how to really have potential parents know what the risks would be if each of them were trade carriers of sickle cell. They would have a high probability of having a child with full-blown sickle cell. The other thing that I discovered is that the industries were overtly discriminating against trade carriers of sickle cell claiming that they in fact had sickle cell because of, out of ignorance, not knowing a trade carrier of any trade disorder did not in fact themselves inflicted with the disease. And so the offsprings of trade carriers were being discriminated against and were not provided insurance coverage. That seems like something pretty silly. You have other trade carriers, hemophilia, syphilis, fibrosis, Huntington, and the list goes on, and they were not being discriminated against. So I introduced legislation which gave a lot of flack, but the law of the night says that everybody's treated fairly if you're a trade carrier, that you cannot just openly discriminate against the children of trade carriers of sickle cell, you've got to treat them the same as others. They learned also that trade carriers was not just predominantly within the African-American community, but other countries surrounding, the countries of origin where that began in order to fight off the disease. Now we have here a group of people from a very fine hospital who's carrying on the fight, Kaiser Permanente West L.A. sickle cell team participants. We have Dr. Elaine Smith, Director of Sickle Cell Hemoglobinopathy-- She'll tell what it is. Center for Southern California Kaiser Permanente. Dr. Osborne Blake, Director of Adult Sickle Cell Medical Care Program. Shirley Brown RN, Adult Sickle Cell Coordinator. Charlotte Huff Dixon RN, Pediatric Sickle Cell Coordinator. Amy Broadman, Project Manager. Competing the team will also be Roberta Tina Hera. Did I get it? Tina Hera. And Gail Corret, Public Affairs Kaiser Permanente. So the Kaiser Permanente team was selected from 30 Kaiser Medical Center nationwide for their comprehensive and culturally sensitive sickle cell care program. The West L.A. program is the only comprehensive pediatric transition and adult program outside of the academic medical center. So it's indeed my pleasure, Mr. President, members, before I do that, there's another bill I introduced, Tenet Bill 1065, which provided the money's fee schedule for sickle cell programs. There's another one called Holden Genetically Handicap Program, we set aside $2 million at least a year at that time for that purpose. My question is, are you getting the money? And if you're not getting the money, let me know, so we can have it put back into the state budget, so you can get the money. But here again, it's my pleasure and congratulations to the Kaiser Permanente Hospital, on occasion of your receiving the James A. Voig Award for Quality. On behalf of the 10th Council District, we join with the Los Angeles City Council in applauding your outstanding dedication and service to the community. Your exemplary efforts offer quality health care are worthy of high regards. Thank you for making Los Angeles a better place to live, and certainly a lot more healthier.
My name is Dr. Elaine Smith, and I'd like to thank Nate Holden and the council people for this recognition. This has been a decade and a half in coming, but we represent Kaiser Permanente, and their creativity is physicians being in charge, and this has been a wonderful result of. Thank you very much.
Dr. Smith, were you going to answer Mr. Holden's question? Are you receiving the funding from the state?
I'm paid by Kaiser Permanente. We do not have any grants from the state.
We'll take care of that. Bring the baby with you.
My name is Osborne Blake, and there's a lot of other people that have not joined us today, but we'd like to thank them for their dedication, and without their hard work, we wouldn't be able to have this success. And so I just want to thank them, and thank the city, and Nate Holden.
Dr. Smith, I'm Amy Broadman, the project manager. Dr. Smith wanted me to reiterate that we are the only comprehensive pediatric and adult program with a transition between the pediatric side and the adult side, outside of an academic health center in the country. So that is quite an accomplishment, and we are very proud to be able to serve the African-American community of Los Angeles in this regard.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. The chair now recognizes Councilmember Galanter for purposes of two presentations.
Where's my crew? Mr. President, as you see, I'm out of costume and back like normal. We are here this morning to celebrate the grand reopening of Venice Beach, which we actually celebrated down at the beach a couple of weeks ago, but which I really think deserves a little advertisement here at home. As you know, Venice Beach is the single biggest tourist attraction in Los Angeles County, and it gets a lot of wear and tear as a result of that. Over the years, it has had a lot of wear and tear. You all will remember a couple of different county propositions and city propositions that appropriated money, which the voters decided to appropriate money to refurbish our parks, refurbish our beaches, do restoration, a whole bunch of things. So we were able to use a lot of that money to do a grand overhaul, a makeover, as it were, of Venice Beach. And if you haven't been there in a while, you really need to come see what our Recreation and Parks Department, and our consultants, and our community have pulled off down there. Took $17 million, about 10 years altogether. It took many months of public workshops, which were quite an entertainment in themselves. After attending one of those, Mayor Reardon actually walked back to where I was standing elsewhere on the beach, and he said, "You know, Ruth, your job is harder than mine." Which I'd been, of course, trying to tell him for years. But we are very proud of this, because the community and other interested people who care about Venice Beach came together, they fought, as they always do, this is Venice, we specialize in disagreement. And they, but they did a remarkable thing, they came out with a consensus. And I want to honor today some of the people who really made that possible. Since there are a lot of them, we're not going to give everybody a certificate out here, or we'll be here until next week. But let me just tell you what's in this renovation. We repaved the oceanfront walk, that was the last great battle. Should it be asphalt, or should it be bricks? Well, we solved that problem, it's concrete. So everybody's equally unhappy, and we were able to go forward. We have a beautifully landscaped and inviting central plaza. We no longer have the Venice Pavilion, instead we have an honest-god beach. Beach, the biggest beach in our area. We have new irrigation. We have new street lighting. We have new children's play equipment. We have new bathrooms. We have a new basketball court. We have a new fountain. It's really a very bizarre fountain. You'll enjoy it. It's called the Blowhole, and you'll see why when you go see it. We've refurbished the pagodas. We have a new police substation. The palm trees were finally trimmed, first time since 1984. The mayor has promised me he'll keep enough in the budget so that we don't have to wait that many years again. We do have, even though we tore down the pavilion, we have a, it's Venice after all, we have a, an artistic graffiti area that was supervised by one of our local arts organizations. We have sculpture and mosaic tiles, and we have children's artwork, and we have a whole lot of really happy people. And as you know, especially elected officials usually hear from our constituents when they're not happy. So if you want to go see some of your constituents happy, they're down at the beach having a really good time. Now, the challenge of this project was to clean up Venice Beach without losing the funkiness, the stuff that makes it the reason people go to Venice Beach. And that was an interesting challenge, but we think that we've we've done what needed to be done. This was not just a city project. As I said, it was also a community project. A lot of the ideas came from the people in the community, and perhaps even more important, a lot of the artwork and the what you see when you get down there also came from the community. So I want to thank a couple of people who I'm, I am going to recognize here in the council chamber and a whole lot of other people besides. And for that, this job having aged me fast, I need my glasses. To need my glasses? Yeah, actually, it did. I used to be able to do this without my glasses. This was a combined effort at the city level. It was led by the Department of Recreation and Parks, and we should be very proud of our Department of Recreation and Parks for what they've done down there. We also had a consultant, an outside consultant whose job it was to conduct the workshops, produce and translate the workshops into real designs and real things that could be built. And we had, who else have we got up here front? We had a construction company that did a marvelous job for us. They did what they were supposed to do. They did it on time. They were nice to everybody while they did it, and and they really got the job done. And let me just mention some of our local institutions, local to the Venice area, who who did this stuff and whose work you will see when you get there. First, of course, is Spark, the Social and Political Art Resources Center, which has been in Venice for a long time. They supervised the graffiti thing and helped with some of the other work. Beyond Baroque, I'm sure you're familiar with, you can actually come visit all these guys, too. Venice Arts Mecca and the Venice Historical Society, and some of our local artists, Noel Asheroff, Bill Adaway, and a group called In Creative Unity. And I know there are others, so I apologize for anybody I left out. Your work is on display, and we want to show that off, too. So today, I want to, if these are right side up, well, they were right side up. No, they're not. And they're also not in the order that they're supposed to be here. All right. First, I'd like to recognize Winwin of the Bureau of Contract Administration, who was the onsite inspector. So being the onsite inspector means that you have to go be essentially the heartless bureaucrat. You have to say, no, you didn't do it exactly right. You have to do it over. But he managed to do this without being a heartless bureaucrat. He managed to catch the problems really before they surfaced and to help get the problem solved, and we love that. So we want to thank you for your hard work. Then I want to thank the RRM Design Group and Keith Gurney in particular. This is the group that had to run the workshops, and they did such a great job that they're now working for us in the port of Los Angeles to try to achieve the same level of consensus and excitement and exciting product in the area around the harbor. But after, remember, you don't just run a workshop, and it's not just a group relations thing. You actually have to turn this into things that people can build. And so I want to thank Keith Gurney and his team for your work once again. I'm going to give you a chance to say something, but hold on a second. Then I have to thank, after you've figured out what can be built, somebody has to build it. And so I want to thank Richard Caldwell from DJM Construction, because without them, it wouldn't have been built. And you see, he smiles. We like that. Nice to see you. And finally, the woman we call to complain whenever anything got behind schedule, Kathleen Chan, who has to be the most resilient employee of the Department of Recreation and Parks, probably in the history of time, because everybody takes their complaints to Kathleen, and it's her job to take them and fix it. And she she did that, and it's just, it's wonderful. And I know that you are pleased, as pleased as I am with it, but I want to thank you again in public for your hard work. And I am also joined here by by the Grand Marshal, as it were, Ellie Oppenheim, the General Manager of the Department of Recreation and Parks, who not only gets to gloat over having achieved it, but now has the responsibility for making sure we can maintain it. So let me thank all of you for your work. We have T-shirts for all the council members, and I want to, you know, we don't have hours. We don't have admission prices. Come on down. It's, actually, you can't go after 10 at night, but that's like all our city parks. So Ellie, did you want to say something? And maybe Keith wants to say a couple of words.
Thank you, Councilwoman. This is a fabulous project. It's the fourth phase of a multi-phase project that started with the refurbishing of the Venice Pier and new children's playground and restrooms at Rose Avenue and additional amenities. And as you've already heard this morning, this latest phase, which we just unveiled and cut the ribbon with in very characteristic Venice fashion, a chainsaw cut the wooden ribbon, is a terrific project. If you haven't seen it, you really must come on down. It's quite unique, and it's quite beautiful and very Venice. And we appreciate the terrific collaboration between the council office and RRM and the contractor and and our other fellow city departments that made it possible to bring it to the whole community and really to the whole world. So thank you for your leadership.
Now, actually, I left somebody out, and so I just have to say that this Kathleen got to take all the complaints, but Mike Bonnen from my staff got to call them in. Where'd he go? It's Mike is the, come up here. Mike is the guy who who really was my lieutenant on this and kept track. He'd go down there and sneak around and see if anything needed to be done, and then he'd call either Richard and say, you have to build this, or Kathleen and say, you have to do. And so they've all gotten to know each other very well, and I wanted to say a public thank you and congratulations to you as well. Okay, two more short statements here. Keith, representing the forces of compromise here.
Thank you, Ruth. I'd like to say that when we started this job, I had a full head of hair. It was indeed a challenge, but without the hands-on management of Kathleen Chan, the focused assistance of Mike Bonnen and Nick Lieutenant of your office, and without your leadership and resourcefulness, it couldn't have been done. And most of all, thanks to the community of Venice for agreeing to ultimately keep an open mind, with the result being a really wonderful project. Thank you.
And now the man who built it.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that being a Republican from Orange County, going to Venice was quite an eye-opener. And but I started the project rather ominously by installing my trailer on the bike path, which I was immediately told I had to remove it. Kathleen Chan was so kind to point that out to me. Shortly thereafter, I ran into this blond guy who was riding a bicycle, wearing shorts and a tank top and tennis shoes, and immediately told me that he represented Ruth Galanter's office, and he wanted to know what was going on on the project. And I said, well, do you have any identification? And he said, well, no, I don't have any on me. And so, you know, that kind of started my relationship in Venice. But I haven't, I promised my wife that I would not get a tattoo. I have to admit, however, I do like reggae music a little more than I did when the project started. But on a serious note, DJM is very proud to have been a part of this project, and we hope that the people of Venice, the users of the Venice Oceanfront Walk area and the Pavilion will appreciate the hard work that went into this project by the city, the architects, all the subcontractors that work for DJM Construction. And again, we just want to say that we're very proud to have been a part of the project, and thank you very much for this recognition.
Okay, that's enough hilarity for the morning. Thank you, Mr. President.
I'm sorry. Did you have a second presentation? For purposes of presentation, the Chair recognizes Councilmember Chick. And I want Councilmember Galanter to know I'm definitely going to the beach.
Thank you, Mr. President. And gathered around me are some very, very special people. Taking the lead, Father Gregory Boyle with his homeboy graffiti removal team, something we know we we need even more help on in the city and more resources than we have now. But today, I am especially drawing attention to honor Father Gregory Boyle, who is a Jesuit priest, now Director of Jobs for Future and Homeboy Industries. He's long been active in our community through his former parish, Dolores Mission Church in Boyle Heights, in trying to prevent and reduce violent crime, particularly gang violence. I'm going to ask for quiet, please. He is one of the most dedicated and innovative members of our community doing this kind of very needed work. His latest endeavor, Jobs for Future, similar to Homeboy Industries, helps get kids out of gangs through education and job training. Just good plain basic sense, colleagues, good logic, that if we want to turn our young people away from crime and violence and gang influence and joining gangs, that we have to give them hope in the future. We have to give them the skills that they need to get and hold decent-paying jobs. We have to help them access those jobs. That is what Father Gregory Boyle's work is all about. He brings an incredible combination of book smarts, BA degree, masters, and masters of divinity and theology, and street smarts to his work, and our whole city benefits from his efforts. He's here today because he was recently honored by the California Wellness Foundation for his contributions to public health through the work I've just described to you. He received from the Wellness Foundation the California Peace Award for fostering public health through the prevention of violence and crime. And so another small but important way to recognize a truly great community leader and a person who has dedicated his life to helping others. I asked Father Boyle to come and join us today and receive this resolution, signed by myself, the mayor, the president, and the council member of his district, Nick Pacheco, and it should have been Mr. Ridley-Thomas and everybody else come to think of it. But we can always add signatures, because I know all of my colleagues who have been involved with you, Father Boyle, respect and honor you. At any rate, I want to turn the microphone over to you, have you introduce these hard-working young men, and to say congratulations.
Father Boyle, before you say a few words, Councilmember Pacheco would like to say something.
Mr. President and colleagues, I also want to commend Father Greg for this award. It's one I'm sure of many he receives, but as he will tell you, most of his work is really a byproduct of him caring for the individuals behind him. We have in our office been very closely working with Father Greg and have looked at the city contracting system and looking for areas where these young men can provide city services. The anti-graffiti program that they're now doing was one of the first places we turned to. The next place we're looking at, so you get an idea of the types of contracts that we're looking at, are the Handy Worker Program, the ones that go out and do non-contractor, there's no contractor necessity to help out seniors with their small repairs in the community. We were unable to get that done this round, but Father Greg knows that that's the type of contract or type of service that the city provides where these young men could really play a role in and change their lives and hopefully get off of any sort of path that goes to nowhere. But Father Greg knows that we are working very hard, and I commend him for working hard in the community. He is a Jesuit. I am a Jesuit-trained individual, having gone to Loyola High School, and that's where I first met Father Greg. He's a great individual for our community. So I do tell him thank you for all the residents of all heights.
And Father Boyle, before you say you speak, I want to say a few remarks. You have incredible stock in this city, and this council, I think, wants to be extremely supportive of your efforts. I know that through the leadership recently of Councilmember Pacheco, we're trying to make sure you get your building rebuilt, and we provide you the proper funding. Now, I say that because from my perspective, and I've got 142 days left, you don't ask for enough. I think that you're sitting in a position, and you're running the kind of program that we want to see be successful, and we want to try and help. So any more, any guidance you can give us in regards to how we can help you expand what you're doing, I think you have a very supportive council here of your programs, and we just don't hear enough from you. And again, Councilmember Pacheco is playing a lead role right now in terms of some of the capital for the building itself. When we talk about the relationships between your program and other potential city programs, I think that you'll find a very willing council to work with you. And I just want to make those remarks, because I won't be here after a while, but I want you to take advantage of us. Councilmember Ridley-Thomas?
Mr. President, members of the council, I think it should be well-known to all when we invoke the name of Father Gregory Boyle. It has meaning far beyond the confines of his parish. His witness is, in a word, large, and it is a witness that is candid and constructive. If we were to connect the presentation made by Mr. Pacheco earlier and that which is being done by Ms. Chick now, there is a line that ought to be both acknowledged, appreciated, and indeed celebrated. What we have before us, Mr. President and members of the council, is an expression of hope that beyond anyone's claim about discarding any individual, that redemption radically applied can make a qualitative difference in the life of the individual and his or her community. It seems to me that Father Boyle represents that in a very powerful way, and his being here this morning is a stellar reminder of that very notion that God is not yet finished with any of us. Thank you.
Father Boyle.
Thank you very much, Laura. I really appreciate your initiative in this and your thoughtfulness. And all the members of the council, you've long been a part, I think, of the sea change in terms of emphasizing gang intervention, not just prevention and enforcement. I want to acknowledge Mark and Nick and Mike and and others who have certainly been a part of that all along the way. I'm particularly honored that this moment is was scheduled on Nick Pacheco's birthday, and I'm really honored to be here on this day. I have with me here are the members of the Graffiti Removal, Homeboy Industries Graffiti Removal, one of our five businesses, where a gang member is from different gangs, enemies, working side by side with each other. I think they're the best graffiti removal team in the city, because they're, they've all been there, done that. They don't just respond to phone calls. They go to where the most provoking kind of graffiti tend to be, and they remove it before deaths happen. We, in October, we had a 19-year-old and a 10-year-old girl both gunned down because of graffiti, and and the graffiti happened to be on on city property that we weren't allowed to take care of, and it sat there, and it and it sat there, and it festered, and it created, really, those two deaths. I hugely support Laura Chick's proposal and others for increased funding for graffiti removal. It's that important. Thank you very much for this honor. I've never kept a single honor I've ever been given, because I know that I am a stand-in for the young men and women who, in my mind, are heroes. So I always give this to somebody, and I'm going to give this to Robert Olvera, who's the crew chief for graffiti removal. It'll hang in his house. I'll always know where it is. Thank you very much.
Madam President, I'm sure we all took note of that comment about graffiti that wasn't allowed to be removed from city property, and that it'll be a race to see which one of us gets first, or preferably as a team, to change that rule. There's something clearly wrong with how we're doing it. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you to all of you for the work that you do and keep up the good work.
Madam President, if I may?
Mr. Ridley Thomas.
It would take a Jesuit priest to reveal unto us that one of our colleagues has a birthday today.
Were you going to sing?
Well, I can, if you wish.
I'm actually just relieved to hear that someone besides me is getting older.
Well, what I am told is when Mr. Pacheco first joined this august body, he had a full head of hair and it was completely black. And in the space of two years, he's already begun to look younger, with one notable exception, but only half of the entire city council, Nick. Although you didn't wish for us to know it, we extend to you a heartfelt happy birthday.
I think we all do. And if the special birthday present will try to get you out of here so you can go have a birthday party.
Yeah.
All right. With that, I believe we're ready to begin.
First order of business, approval of the minutes?
Without objection, the minutes are approved.
Commendatory resolutions for approval?
And them too.
Before starting the regular agenda, there's several items to be continued or referred. Item number two, a request by Council District Seven to continue this matter until February 13th.
All right. Is there any objection? In that case, item two is continued.
Item number five, a request from the Los Angeles Housing Department and Council District One to continue that matter until March 16th.
All right. Any problem with that?
Is that engineering the vacation?
I'm sorry.
It's a re- yes, okay.
It's a re.
It's a re, yeah.
Item number seven, the request that that matter be continued till February 16th and in the interim referred to Council District One.
All right. Without objection, refer that to Council District.
And item number 11A, a request that that matter be referred back to Council District 13.
All right. Item 11A.
Which is the one we want?
On the regular agenda, item number one is an item notice for public hearing.
We do not have any cards. Is there anyone who wants to be heard on item one? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Members of the council? Nobody? Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That's approved.
The ordinance will go over a week?
Yes. The ordinance, that's right.
Items number three and four on the regular agenda are items for which public hearings have been held. Three and four.
Okay. Any specials? Open the roll on items three and four. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Those are approved.
Item number six and eight through 10, 11B and C, 12 through 14, are items for which public hearings have not been held.
All right. We do not have any cards on those. Is there anybody who wants to be heard on any of those? Seeing none, the public hearings are closed. Members of the council, any specials?
15.
Sorry? We're only up to 14. We'll get to 15 in a second. All right. No specials. Open the roll on six, eight through 10, 11B and C through 14. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Those are approved. Fourth with on item six, please.
Item number 15 on the continuation agenda is the item for which public hearing has not been held.
All right. Nope, I have no cards on that either. Anybody wish to be heard on item 15? None? The public hearing is closed. Ms. Walters, did you want to? We'll just take it up. Could you push the button? Ms. Walters?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I ask for this to be continued because...
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, we didn't have that. We just, I just thought you wanted it called special.
Yes, well, I thought...
I'm sorry. Go ahead. Excuse me.
Okay. Are you ready for me to?
Yes, I am. Sorry, you just surprised me there.
Okay. I ask for this to be continued because it was an extension of a contract for employing temporary personnel. The contract was originally for $250,000, and now we're going to increase it to $400,000, $450,000. And I'm very concerned about the agency's dependence on temporary employees, and if I see Mr. Charlin over there, maybe he would like to come and talk about it.
Good morning. Mr. Charlin is not here. I'm Ken Clark with the agency.
Do you have information related to why this is occurring?
The, well, we had submitted a report to your office yesterday. We had identified the temp positions that we would require for the remainder of this fiscal year. These are for short-term projects where the agency has, you know, special needs. They generally range from anywhere from a month to two, three, up to six months.
Well, I have the transmittal that you sent yesterday, and it's a single sheet with the number of months that these employees will be further needed. Some are apparently part-time employees, and the others are longer-term employees, or full-week employees. The question still remains, why was the contract at first for $250,000, and now you're going to almost double it? And this does not answer that question.
Correct, it doesn't. As we had indicated in the report that we had originally submitted, the original transmittal, we had identified a number of projects in that report that we did not anticipate when we had originally come forward for the request for the initial $250,000. Some of the projects that we talked about was, the projects that we didn't originally anticipate, was doing some additional survey work for the LA Harbor Pacific Quarter and I think city center projects. It was doing some survey work in those projects. In a couple of the other different areas, we've had some delays in the recruitment process. We currently have approximately 12 positions that have been budgeted for, and we're in the process of recruiting for those positions right now. So once we have completed the recruitment process, that would eliminate the need for some of these positions that you see on the list.
Well, I'm very concerned about the increased use of temporary staffing, not only in CRA but other departments as well. And I would like to ask Mr. Ridley Thomas if he contemplates looking at that issue in the Personnel Committee.
Madam President, with your permission, if you refer it to Personnel for consideration, I'll be glad to do so and dispose of it with dispatch.
All right.
Good. That satisfies me.
That take care of it? All right. In that case, we'll refer item 15 to the Personnel Committee, and you'll straighten that all out with them, and then we'll hope that that will be back soon. Which brings us to the next item.
You know, that takes care of everything on the regular agenda. You also have a speeding, excuse me, special meeting agenda.
You're trying to get Mr. Pacheco out fast, too, aren't you?
I am.
Okay. So, do we need then to adjourn? Will recess the regular meeting?
Yes, recess.
We are now recessing the regular meeting and calling to order the special meeting. Please call the roll.
Bernson, Check, Fuhrer, Galanter, Hernandez, Holden, Ms. Kelsey, Pacheco, Padilla, Ridley Thomas, Florence, Wax, Walters, Farrow, 11 members present. A quorum, Madam President.
Thank you. All right. We have one item on the agenda, and Madam City Attorney, I believe the item on the special council meeting, do we need to make findings?
No.
No. All right. This is a, well, this is the only item on the agenda. Does anybody have any comments? If you do, we'll talk about it, otherwise we'll just vote on it. All right. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That's approved. Fourth with on that, please. And we will now adjourn the special meeting and go back into our regular meeting for...
Public comment.
Public comment. And we do actually have a card on public comment.
Madam President?
This is the, yes.
If I might, the Chief Legislative Analyst noting activity in Sacramento today on water and power issues has a motion which we're working on, which might await your second.
I just, I just signed it.
Okay, so we can do it today?
I signed it, I initialed it.
Okay, it's a special motion.
We're going to bring that in as a special. All right. So we'll do that as soon as we finish public comment. Now, this is the time for a public comment on items not on today's agenda. Mr. Robinson?
Madam President, members, because the racial divide between blacks and whites in America is evolving into class warfare, the retrenchment of racism is protracting as the rich get rich and the poor get poorer. Those who will not be able to compete because of the challenges of color will increasingly become marginalized. For hundreds of years, blacks in America were murdered, tortured, or beaten for learning to read. Today, we are the majority of America's prison population and only 10% of America's general population incarcerated because of the lack of affirmative action. Affirmative action is needed if we are to gain our freedom, to gain the education that will erase those lines erected by slavery, segregation, and second-class citizenship. A warning light is flashing on the dashboard of America's economy. Madam President, it ain't no Edsel. It is a false alarm. America's rich elite is aware of the thousand points of light at the end of this economic tunnel, like the invented energy crisis in California, which was caused by the rich elite and the deregulation of the power industry for the purpose of selling tens of billions of dollars in utility bonds to their cronies in '96. This contrived national economic crisis is a construct of those in the rich elite in America who will realize extraordinary monetary gain in the competition between global markets in the coming decade, particularly vis-à-vis the European common market and the United States. President Bush has a plan, and he is not challenged by a divided Congress like that which destroyed President Clinton's economic stimulus plan during his first year in office, his quote "honeymoon," unquote. Consumer confidence in America's future is returning after the shock, after the shock of the Florida fiasco. That outrage is proving that Mr. Al Gore won the election, vote both popular and electoral, but because the voting process was stopped by a supposedly silent Clarence Thomas and his political cronies on the Supreme Court, President Bush has been certified and sworn. So, some argue about the tax cut. But I again quote Margaret Thatcher, "You cannot give sufficient help to the unfortunate member of society if you do not give sufficient opportunity to be able." And moreover, Paul Tsongas, who said simply, "You can't redistribute the wealth if you do not create wealth." Thank you.
All right. Thank you. That closes the public comment period, and we do have a special. Mr. Fuhrer?
Yes, thank you, Madam President.
We first have to vote on the findings.
Right.
So you speak to that first.
City Attorney, are you familiar with the findings, or shall I speak to them?
If Mr. Fuhrer would like to make the findings, that's fine.
Well, fine. I, the water, pardon me, the power crisis in Sacramento throughout the state is well-known to all of us. Legislation which the council went on record supporting very recently, which would allow the Water and Power Department to sell to neighboring jurisdictions, including hospitals, school districts, or neighboring cities in need, is being contemplated seriously now. And the Chief Legislative Analyst in his reporting on what's happening has brought to us the idea that we need to be further refining the criteria on which the city would agree to sell power to public agencies and other cities in need. This resolution reflects additional criteria which would satisfy our goals as a city, as well as enabling us to participate in helping to resolve the crisis in other jurisdictions. If we don't do this as a special, the legislative process may overtake the prior, more general motion. Madam City Attorney, who is speaking on a different issue? Gail?
Yes.
Bottom line, legislation pending in Sacramento, these are further criteria to refine it. From the City Attorney's standpoint, the findings are sufficient, is that correct?
Yes, absolutely.
All right. But we first have to vote on the findings. So let's first take a vote on the findings. So open the roll. I'm sorry, did you want to speak to the findings? Mr. Wax?
Yeah, I actually did want to address why we have to do this today. First, and this seems fairly significant and substantive in its nature, and it involves important policy. The question is, should we just do this instantly, or do we have time to be more deliberative? Or, if there is an urgency, can we do this with the promise this will also perhaps go to committee and get more public hearing? And, you know, the last time we acted, we all acted on faith, and then we got a lot of criticism, because we, some people didn't feel we'd consider all the options. I don't want that to repeat itself. On the other hand, I don't want to handicap our ability to look out after our interests.
Mr. Wax, I believe that your comments are germane to whether we should adopt the motion, but the...
No, as to whether we should hear it today.
Well, the reason for hearing it today, that Mr. Fuhrer suggested, is that there is legislative activity going on as we speak that might affect us.
If I could, Madam President, Mr. Wax. First, I think your approach that recommends we adopt this today, but send it for further analysis and refinement to committee in case any additional criteria arise is a good recommendation. Second, as opposed to the matter which you're referring to, which generated controversy, the previous motion related to this legislation has only generated applause and no controversy whatsoever. This just is a refinement of the criteria there. I think you have a good recommendation.
I'm going to give a little faith to you, Mr. Fuhrer. I'm not actually commenting on the substance as much as the need for input and the process on issue of water policy of this magnitude. Because of the urgency, I will go along with voting to hear it today, but I would ask that simultaneously, we give this a little bit more open and thoughtful in process, and then if we feel we want to modify it or make changes, we can.
Fair enough.
But it's too important to sort of do on the...
I think it's a good idea.
Okay. Mr. Holden, did you want to speak to the findings?
Well, I'm looking at it with a critical eye, as did Mr. Wax. Fact of the matter, you have a special session going, number one. Number two, we've adopted a number of motions which address the issue already, that we don't want to be cooped up in whatever deregulation program they have, this state agency, same as ISO. We don't want to, we didn't want to depart of ISO, that deregulation program, nor did we want to depart of Senate Bill Special, Special Legislation, Senate Bill Six by Burton, which we included in small print. My understanding that we've been taken out of that legislation, and that no longer affects what energy we transmit on our transmission lines, or any energy that we produce for our own customers. So, if you're going to do something, I think it should be comprehensive, number one, which I would support, quickly. Number two, we should have a list of every special bill that's been put in during the special session. It should be analyzed for the purpose and the intent of the bill. We should not approach it on a piecemeal basis at all. I applaud Mr. Fuhrer for his thoughts, his concept, and what he's attempting to do here. But we got to deal with those guys up there, you know, and we are a chartered city. We have some rights, and I would say that they cannot impose anything on us in this regard, being independent as we are, that they choose to. being independent as we are, that they choose to. So unless we want to do it also. So I would say it's a good idea, it should be more comprehensive, we should put all the bills together in the languages of the bill, that's what I think. I mean, you just want to run with this, fine, but I think it should be given a thorough review and a...
Later, after the findings, yeah.
All right, open the roll on the findings, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
All right, the matter is now before us, Mr. Fuhrer.
Thank you, I think Mr. Holden says some important things, and I think in combination with Mr. Wax's recommendation, items that we adopt this today and that this motion, along with other motions related to electricity, go to both the Commerce Committee, which relates to water and power, and Mr. Holden's committee on IGR, the, Mr. Holden, I don't believe that you were present the day the predecessor to this motion came in, which was a motion to enable our city, our Water and Power Department, to on our own, unilaterally, be able, should we wish to only, sell to a neighboring jurisdiction in need. Your point about addressing the other actions in Sacramento through your committee and Ms. Galanter's committee, I think is a very important one, so what I urge we do is to combine the two approaches, refine the prior motion and the method before us today, but have your committee and Ms. Galanter's review the package of things pending, because you're certainly correct that Mr. Burton's original draft legislation, very different from what's before us today...
Absolutely.
Was, would have been horrific from the city's standpoint. I want to assure Mr. Holden that this motion arises from the city's best interest exclusively, as did the predecessor that this merely refines.
Yeah, I appreciate that very much, I just wanted to be all-inclusive, because we may need to include other resolved clauses in the motion or like motion to address issues that are appearing in not only SB 6 special, but also other special elections as you have mentioned. You mentioned other election, but we were nonspecific as to what the bills, I mean, you mentioned other legislation, but you were not specific in terms of the legislation which would include language which would invade the privacy and the rights of the city, and I think that's really what we gotta do to get to nuts and bolts.
Yeah, Mr. Holden, if we could, if we could adopt this today to the extent it goes so far and then embellish it, enhance it...
We're gonna have to do that.
To the committee, that would be, I think, a good approach, and I think you have some important ideas about the comprehensive nature of the issues involved here, but we shouldn't not do this today because we're gonna lose track of what's happening up there.
You can't do it today, I mean, it's too, too, too much.
Just, just for clarity for myself and for the clerk, since this is legislation...
Well, you hold my time while you get clarifying.
Well, actually, all right.
I'm sorry, I thought that Mr. Holden was finished.
Go ahead, I'm holding Mr. Holden's time, go ahead.
Okay, I am sorry, Mr. Holden, I'm just trying to clarify what Mr. Fuhrer is asking for, since this is legislation, are you asking that we approve your motion but send the general subject to the committee because this would then need to go...
The best approach, if I might suggest it, would be to combine Mr. Wax's concerns with Mr. Holden's concerns and do the following, adopt the motion as far as it goes today so that our advocates in Sacramento through the mayor's office can speak to the details. Second, send this motion and a collection of any other matters that relate to electricity, both motions emanating from the council and an analysis of things that come from elsewhere to Ms. Galanter and Ms. Holden, Mr. Holden's committees, so that we can come back with a comprehensive approach to these issues in the council as Mr. Holden recommends, so we can enhance the details if we want to, but if we don't do this today, the cart up there may get way out of territory, we may no longer have an opportunity to speak to these issues if we don't do this today.
All right, so you really are rather splitting it off so that it can, the part that needs to go to the mayor and, and the rest of it can go to committee.
I believe so, yes, Mr. Holden, you have a minute 56 left.
Thank you very much. Well, I mean, my antenna just go up every time I hear something about DWP and energy and what might happen in terms of taking away our rights and independence to transmit our own surplus for profit or keeping the lights on in the city of Los Angeles. Just not too long ago, there were two people on this council, Ms. Rita Walters and I, I want to repeat that, Ms. Rita Walters and I, who didn't buy into the trick game to sell Mojave Energy Producing Plant, didn't buy into that. The guy sat right there at the table and said, "The Edison deal will be closed and we have to sell also." 70% of the energy that is producing in Mojave would be come back to the state of California. He was told we didn't need it, but the PUC said no to Edison, "We will not let you close that deal." Don't, you, you, you listen, "We will not let you close that deal, therefore," as Edison tried to raise their rates on the consumers in the areas that they serve, they still had to sell that energy and keep the rates lower, so there's still a game. But our 20%, we sold off because we were conned. But the deal's not closed yet. The papers, documents have not been signed, and they should not be signed unless and until PUC says it's okay for Edison deal to go through. We have been taken. I would only suggest that if we can find a legal way to take it back, we really ought to do that, and I'm sure Ms. Galanter, who's chair of that committee, can make that happen, and I'll rally around her 100% to try to make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fuhrer.
Technical matter, I'm told by the City Attorney that procedurally we should adopt the motion and then, we should adopt the motion and then send the concepts embedded in it to your committee and to Mr. Holden's, and to Mr. Holden's committee. So, adopt the motion, concepts go to those locations for further evaluation and embellishment.
All right, I hope somebody, I've had everybody in the world back here while this was going on, so I hope somebody is clear about what happens here.
Conrad, we're under control, right?
All right, are we under control?
Under control.
We're under control.
All right, in that case, open the roll on the motion as revised and amended and manipulated, so we're under control. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Thank you, that is approved, forthwith. Now, have we anything else?
You have a special two, City Attorney needs to make findings regarding that matter.
Okay, special two.
Yes, this one is a little bit less complicated, this has to do with the Board of Water and Power Commissioners, on February 6th, they passed a motion awarding a contract with Turbine Services for turbine blades for the Harbor Generating Station. This is, you have to make the findings for the Rule 23, and then there is a further motion to assert jurisdiction pursuant to Charter Section 245 and approve it so that the time period will not continue to run.
So we need, in effect, three votes?
That's right.
Okay, all right, so, let's first open the roll on the findings. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
All right, the matter is now before us, you've actually heard what the reason for the motion is, is there anybody who needs further discussion? We're now going to vote on whether to assert jurisdiction. This is basically what we used to call a friendly Prop 5, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
All right, that's approved, so the matter is now before us, and now we get to vote on the, the matter, we get to adopt the thing. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is also approved, forthwith on that too, please. And, next.
Motion's for posting and referral.
All right, the motions will be posted and referred.
Councilmember's request to be excused from council attendance, Councilmember Ridley Thomas requests to be excused on Friday, February 16th for city business, a motion is required.
Uh, Mr. Padilla moves, Mr. Pacheco seconds. You announce the vote.
The desk is clear.
All right, do we have any adjourning motions? Adjourning motions? We do, I hear somebody say yes. I don't hear anybody say yes. Yes, we do have an adjourning motion, all right, would everybody please rise for adjourning And I believe it's Ms. Walters who has the adjourning motion, go right ahead.
Yes, yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Councilmembers, I would ask you to adjourn today in memory of Yvonne Gunning. She was 55 years old at the time of her death and lived in the 9th Council District for most of her life. She attended Jefferson High School and was an active community member. She will be sorely missed. Her funeral is Monday in Long Beach at the 111 Church, that's the actual name of the church, on 70th Street in Long Beach. She is survived by two children, Christie and Billy, and four sisters and one brother.
Thank you, and I'd like to ask that, and perhaps all members would join me, in adjourning in memory of Dale Evans, another icon of the childhood of many of us here, and after all the articles that appeared in the papers yesterday about her, I'm not sure we really need to say much more, but I did not know until I, until she died, that she was the actual writer of Happy Trails. And so, that's certainly embedded in everybody's brain here, so I think that it would be appropriate for us to recognize her as certainly a wonderful, that was with the days of clean, nonviolent, or relatively nonviolent entertainment, and certainly a good advertisement for Southern California and our culture, and I would ask that we adjourn in her memory.
Mr. Holden?
Right, I saw Roger Rogers and that is on TV many times, I paid a dime to go watch them, and think they were so informative for me, they would have a six shooter fired an hour and a half, as long as the movie was going.
[laughing] The same six shooter?
They could do some great things, but they're gonna be missed, they entertained so many people in my generation for so long, and it was really clean, funny, we went out there saying, "I'm Roger Rogers" and the other boy would be Dale Evans.
And did you know that Dale Evans' horse in the comic books was named Powell, but on television was named Buttermilk? I mean, these are important things to remember. All right, I think, I think we are ready to call the roll here. And we are adjourned, happy birthday, Mr. Pacheco, enjoy the rest of the day.
Happy Trail.